It's 5:30, so we'll call to order this meeting for Monday, March 2nd, 2020. Carl, can I get a roll call, please?
Councilmember Remley.
Here.
Ronain.
Here.
Lunsman.
Here.
Reif.
Here.
Johnson.
Here.
Bunsonus.
Present.
Olson.
Rux.
Here.
Mayor Shawman.
Here.
Please stand with me for the Pledge of Allegiance.
allegiance for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
First order of business will be to approve last week's minutes for the meeting of February 24th, 2020. Can I get a motion?
Move.
Second.
Got a motion from Bunsonus and a second from Mark Remley. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
If there was nay, motion does carry. Next, we've got several speakers here to address us for the open forum. We're going to start with Keith Shursky with the Fire Department to talk to us about the coronavirus. If you'd be so kind, make your way to the podium and the floor will be yours.
My requirement is set.
We'll hear you better and the people watching on television will hear you. And take a look and see if the little green light is on that microphone, if it is.
Yes, it is.
Perfect.
You're on TV, so just remember that.
Remember, nobody's probably watching.
The ratings are very low.
Ratings are low, good. I'll fit right.
Just press it again, you'll be all right.
Nice. Okay. Hi, guys. Let's talk about coronavirus. First and foremost, Aberdeen Fire Rescue is well-prepared for it. That's the short story. This is how we are prepared for it. Our staff is trained to take care of patients with elevated risk. Our staff is working with other staffs throughout the city and throughout the county in making sure or helping them be prepared to handle the risk. Right now, there's very low risk to the citizens of Aberdeen or Brown County. Cannot stress that enough right now. As far as PPE is concerned, which is personal protective equipment, we are pretty set up. We're well set up to handle, I want to say, more than major emergencies right now, as far as that's concerned. Chief Meister tasked me with monitoring the coronavirus. I've been monitoring it on my own since its inception, if you will, and have been just watching as it's growing. Short story is, since it broke out of China, it's been very dynamic. Right now, we have about 56 countries that are currently showing a coronavirus infection, and it's not considered a pandemic at this time, so we are not panicking. The, in the United States, the West Coast, Washington State, Oregon, California, and Arizona do have confirmed cases. Washington State's being watched really close due to the fact that they do have person-to-person exposures, contaminations, infections going on. There's a rumor going around on the internet about Kirkland Fire Rescue. They have 20 people that have been placed on quarantine. When I researched this this morning and looked at it, it was on recommendation from the state health department from Washington State. Currently, none of them are experiencing any signs or symptoms, and tests are pending from CDC. I am taken away from that information there that those firefighter paramedics truly knew and know how to take care of the patients that we're doing. I'm reasonably confident Aberdeen Fire Rescue can handle that as well. I do have other information for you, and I'm prepared to take questions.
Councilman Ronain.
Thank you, Mayor. First of all, I appreciate, appreciate this. I think this is a, hopefully this won't be an important issue in our part of the country, but it's good to know that, that we've got people within the city who are thinking about it, and I appreciate your involvement and appreciate Chief Meister focusing on this. Explain to me a little bit what the relationship is going to be between all of the, between the county, the city, and maybe even the school district in event we do have a, a serious outbreak in, in Brown County. Who, who really takes the lead? What would, what would be the role of the city as you see it?
The lead personnel will be the South Dakota Department of Health. They'll be taking the lead. They'll be in, working with, and they already are working with both local hospitals and their entire system of care. As far as the city taking the lead is concerned, our primary job is taking care of the individual who is sick and injured. With the task that I've been given, I am more than willing in offering my service to go and talk to other organizations and let them know what's going on. As far as working within the city and the county, today, we had a meeting with Brown County Emergency Management and Brown County Dispatch Center. We are going to be attending a meeting with Chief McNeil later this week to discuss the law enforcement care of what's going to happen and go on from there. As far as additional plans are concerned, none have been developed. As this is dynamic, they will be developed literally on a daily basis.
If, if someone contracts the disease in our area, has a site been identified where that person can be put, separated from, from the general population?
According to the CDC, it'll depend upon their risk and their symptoms. If they are deemed a low risk or moderate risk, they will be advised to stay home and will be doing, best answer would be telemedicine. Simply, they'll be calling their doctor saying, this is what's going on. Doctor will order what needs to be done just to keep that patient out of population. If the patient ends up needing transport, we will take them. We're quite capable of doing that and prepared to do that. And then both hospitals have their own internal policies. Both hospitals have negative pressure rooms, and they have their own treatment priorities set up for that. Our job will be to notify them and work well with them.
And so, and so if our paramedics are involved with, with these kind of patients, first of all, you're providing those services countywide, if I, if I'm right.
That is affirmative, sir.
So you'll be, so you would be involved throughout the county. Do we have what is required to keep our paramedics safe from, from contracting the disease if we have patients that they are transporting?
More than safe, sir.
Perfect. Good. Well, I really appreciate that you, that you delved into this and that the chief has, has delved into this. Again, I hope that this is not, nothing that we, we will in fact have to worry about, but I, it is, it is important for us as a council, not that we necessarily know the answers to these questions, but that you guys have thought about them and that you know the answers to the questions. So I thank you.
Thank you, sir.
Councilman Lunsman.
One quick question. Are the surrounding areas that bring patients here to Aberdeen, are they up to speed, same as you guys, or is that something you're even, I mean, you guys allow to do transports or meet people halfway and transport patients and such. Are they up to date as you guys are?
I can't speak for those individual services. What I can say is that after a meeting today with Brown County Emergency Management and dispatch, we are developing a phone questionnaire has been developed for both the public that we're going to be picking up and any services that we're going to intercept with. That very specific questions have to be asked. If those outlined services answer these questions in a certain manner, we'll advise them what to do immediately, and then it'll prepare our paramedics on, it'll prepare our paramedics. As far as the communities in Brown County are concerned, I'm using Heckla, Groton, Stratford purely as an example. They are going to be receiving information later tonight and over the next week or so on how to prepare for when a respiratory emergency dispatch comes out. So yes is the short answer.
Thank you.
Yes, sir.
I think that I speak on behalf of everyone, and I say that it's reassuring to know that you guys have put in the legwork and have done a great job to keep abreast of the situation. So, thank you for keeping us informed in the topic, and, you know, should anything else come up on our end, we'll be sure to reach out to you. But Keith, thank you for your time, and good luck at your class tonight.
Thank you, sir. I do want to say thank you to Chief Meister and Chief McNeil because both of them have been working really hard on this as well.
Sounds great. Thank you. Have a wonderful night.
Keith, is there anything that you need?
Sure. The question, as I understand, is anything that I need? Right now, no.
Okay.
And when you ask that question, you're specifically talking about Aberdeen Fire? Right now.
Not you personally.
Do you need someone to talk to?
No, I just want to make sure I understand the questions. One of the things that's been going on is Mr. Ladner, Chief McNeil, Chief Meister, Brown County Emergency Manager Meintz, and several other key individuals throughout the states have been getting, throughout the city, have been getting information from me. I decipher this information from credible sources so that they can make information or make choices on what they need to do. Right now, there's only a couple little things that we have to purchase over there, and when I say little, I'm talking less than a couple hundred dollars just to make sure things are okay. So we are sitting pretty good, sir.
Thank you.
Yes.
Thank you very much.
Thanks, Mayor.
The next speaker we've got for our open forum is Shelley Wester-Hired, Executive Director of the Aberdeen Downtown Association, who will be presenting an updated report on marketing for the Downtown Association. Shelley, welcome to the meeting. Thank you for visiting us here tonight.
Thanks for having, I want to know where all these people came from, because they're definitely not here for me. I can pretty much assure you of that. Welcome, everyone. No, thank you for the opportunity to come and give an update as to the Downtown Association and the bid district. I would be a little remiss if I did not do a shout-out to the support that I get from, I do have a part-time assistant in Cara Fonder who aids myself in what we do at the Downtown Association and through the bid district. Us being one and a half down there, I think we get quite a bit done with our board of directors, volunteers, and obviously, a thank you to the council for the support that you've given us over the past several years with regard to promotional dollars and its allocation. They are, it, it is critical to our existence. The promotional fund basically makes up 39% of our revenue, and so it is, it is a big chunk of what we do, and so again, I thank you for that. I could, I could sit and give a talk for quite a while, so I wrote down some stuff so that I don't get off script too much, but kind of get down to the nuts and bolts of what probably you're looking for from us and what we want to tell you about. Over, we'll do a little brief recap of 2019. I'll let you know kind of some of our efforts for 2020 and some planning efforts that we have going for 2021. Most importantly, I want to make you aware of how we're using the money and then the impact that it has had, as best as we can gauge, on the community as a whole, not in just downtown. And when I talk about downtown, or I say about what the Downtown Association or the bid district is doing, I do want to just, again, make everyone aware that it is not just Main Street. We have a 32-block radius in the bid district, and it's a very diverse group. It isn't just retail. It isn't just restaurants and bars. But we do have a lot of service businesses that we support. Legal, medical, we have critical nonprofit organizations that support individuals, and the money that we get through the promotional fund, they're beneficiaries of that. So there's hundreds of businesses in a wide variety that do receive our services with use of the promotional funds. So, a couple questions that we always ask is, first, within spending that, is it in the intended use of what it's supposed to be for? Is it mission-driven? Does it follow the mission and the purpose of the Downtown Association? And what we want to do, does it increase visitation, sidewalk traffic, put heads in beds, and is it support the business owners in what they're currently doing and, and provide them with some longevity going forward for the future? So, that's, you know, kind of the gauge in which we look at and how we're going to be utilizing those dollars. In 2019, we did several things. First thing that we did that probably had the biggest impact was is we had a new website built, and that new website did several things for us and for the people who are members of the Downtown Association, the businesses. It showcases exactly what we want it to. It gives a really great vibe and is more reflective of what the Downtown Association is. And it also has driven a ton of traffic. So through analytics, we can really look and see the increase in traffic that it has brought about. We've been able to give our sponsors more recognition when they come and sponsor our events. We've been able to give more support to the members in showcasing their businesses and what they want to offer and show through photos and direct links and things like that. So it, it really is a really great tool for promoting not only all of downtown, but throughout the city as well, because membership through the Downtown Association can be from anyone. We have several members that are outside that bid district that support what we do. And so through that new website, we are able to showcase them a lot better than we were in the past. We've been able to create several videos, some with drone footage for our events, some that are just more on the shop local type of campaign that we're trying to do to support our businesses. We've created kid zones in our events. Now, with a lot of the events that we do downtown, whether it be our summer concert series, Sizzling Summer Nights, Crazy Days, whatever those are, we've been able to invest and promote to draw more families down to these events and have kid zones being offered. We've increased our social media presence. A lot of people think that social media is free. Well, it's not free because it takes a ton of time. So, and we all know time is money, but it is critical to what we do this day and age. So, we've put a lot of efforts towards, Instagram for us was almost non-existent before. We're over 1,000 members now. Facebook, same thing. We've been in 48 cities, are really engaged in our Facebook page. And so what we're noticing from that is the fact that by investing a little bit of money into some of those local papers, when the state bees come, we follow that up. We find out who these towns are, where they're coming in, and we market to them in those manners. And, and that's really, we've been able to gauge that a lot better and see what our dollars are actually, how it's coming back into our community. The efforts that we support for our businesses, as long as you're a downtown member, we have a jingle that goes on, and we help them with their radio ads if they use that downtown jingle. So we're infusing some of those dollars directly back into the businesses. And we're also making those dollars be reallocated by doing ads and, and having ads in the progress in the, the Aberdeen magazine and in the newspaper and radio and using graphic firms and freelancers within the area. And so that's one thing that we continue to do is re-infuse all of those dollars back into the Aberdeen community. Our events are probably the biggest, most splash that we do, and that, you know, promotes all of downtown and the community. We have noticed that the reach is more outside of our community in the past year than it ever has been. When we get Facebook messages and we get phone calls or we get email messages from people in the out-of-town areas wanting more information of when the next concert is, or when Sizzling Summer Nights is, or Trick or Treat on Main Street, whatever that might be, we're having a lot more interaction with, with cities outside of Aberdeen, and that's exactly what we're wanting to do. So the growth in spectators and as well as their expectations have grown, and I think we've done a great job of being up to that challenge. With that expectation does come additional cost. Aberdeen does a great job with live music, and so, I don't know, it's just maybe a little chip on my shoulder, but I want to have the better concert on Main Street. So, that band costs a little bit more, or what we do, but it's definitely through, through our sponsors and through our volunteers that we're able to do that. And those, those promotional funds help and aid in bringing that awareness to downtown. We do, obviously with the summer concert series, that's three times a summer. We've got a two-day Sizzling Summer Nights event that in the past had been one day. We've made that into a two-day event now for the past two years, which has gone over really well. Again, heads in beds is obviously something that, you know, is something that's important not only to the CVB and the Chamber, but to the Downtown Association as well. We have our Wine Walk, which is always the fall favorite, Trick or Treat on Main Street, Mistletoe on Main. We've been able to do a lot of different things around the Christmas time. We've got some more things that are going to be happening in the next couple of years as well that we're excited to unveil in the next six months here. Crazy Days is something that we're changing up a little bit, so we'll have something new to report in my June report as to what is going to be happening there. The 2019 efforts that we've kind of done outside of the realm of that is, we've kind of, if you've noticed, picked up the look on Main Street of the planters, and redid all the plantings downtown, invested some money from the streetscape into some big bowls that are on the pedestals and some freestanding planters. So obviously, the visual look of downtown Aberdeen is something that we like to take pride in, and we're able to do some increased efforts in that as well. I'm also in charge of the parking board, and parking board is always active. And as well as, we're going to be taking some of those plants and things in the next couple of years and splitting them up and redoing the, the island planters as well. So that's going to be a focus in the next two years of making sure that those are better taken care of and, and are a little bit more visually appealing as, as they're empty on the weekends. Managing of the leased parking is also a responsibility of the Downtown Association, and we're probably at about 90% occupancy right now with regard to that. So leased parking is, is a constant effort, and a parking problem in downtown is a good problem, I think, because obviously, we've got people down here. So, coming in 2020, we've got a couple things. Obviously, you know about our Paint the Town Crosswalk Campaign effort that we are doing. I've got two individuals in Brody Mueller and Carly Porchop that have done an amazing job in leading the charge with this. The Downtown Association is proud to support their efforts. Where we will have the contest going on where people can submit an entry, obviously, you guys all know about that as we presented on that a couple weeks ago, and I thank you for your support in that. But we want that to be a downtown destination every summer for people to come and take a look at what's painted in the crosswalks. We can't afford the sculptures, but we have amazing artists in town, and so that's one way that we want to get people back on Main Street. We're going to be doing a Food Truck Friday after our concert series, so we'll do a, when we have a Thursday night concert, the next day will be Food Truck Friday in a parking lot downtown to help, help keep our, our food vendors coming to our concerts as well. So we're trying to promote a little bit of that and, and give town, downtown a little bit of, of a new feel on those Fridays. We've got a couple different things in our concert series that are happening this year. Again, I will probably unveil a little bit of that prior to my June report, but we're not quite ready to say exactly what that is. But we're going to go in conjunction with a couple collaborative efforts, which will be another big draw for downtown. Planning for 2021, we're looking at a downtown craft beer festival. We're looking at a Christian concert event, kind of like a Super Soul Saturday-type deal, and then a restaurant week, and I'm looking into a new scavenger hunt opportunity for Aberdeen called Let's Roam, which is a ongoing scavenger hunt that you can do within your city. Different themes to it. It can be geared towards families. It can be geared towards bachelor parties. It can be geared towards birthday parties, all kinds of different stuff. So it'd be something that we're digging into and hoping to get some support for here in the next six to eight months as well. And I talk really fast, so was that 10 minutes? But that's kind of a brush of, of what we've been doing, and I'd be happy to take any questions or feedback or whatever you can give me.
Thank you, Shelley. We've got a question from Councilman Bunsonus. He'll start us off.
Shelley, with the loss of the parking tax, how does the parking board move forward with their plans?
What we're looking at right now is possibly, and I don't know if we're ready to say too much right now, but we've had a few different meetings on it, and there could be a reallocation that we can do. I don't know how much I want to go into or how much you want me to go into, Ron, but.
Let's not go into too much, right?
Okay, that's what I thought. But yeah, we, we've had a couple meetings on.
Obviously, you know more than we do.
I don't know as much as Ron knows, but what I do know is that we've kind of had some meetings and tasked him on taking a look at how we might be able to go back through and, and do a reallocation of some kind. We definitely have to do a campaign effort, though, towards the importance of it, the importance of keeping it in the hands of these parking lots and the hands of the parking board, so that they don't become privately owned. But outside of that, we've, we've got a couple different options that we're looking at.
So how would they become privately owned if we would have to sell those parking lots, correct?
Mm-hmm.
So, isn't the first response that the city would take these parking lots back over?
Who are you looking at?
Well, can I, I want to try to take the mystery out of this.
You go, you go right ahead.
In, in, in the process of reviewing the parking district issue, we were looking at all the options that might be available to either recoup some of those parking revenues that are lost, or look at, you know, again, some nuclear options, which would include maybe divesting ourselves of some of the properties, if that's what it was. I don't think there was any support for that, frankly. What we're looking at is, is whether a business improvement district needs to be expanded, revised, to allow for the parking revenues, whether we look at a local improvement district, or whether, again, there's some other option out there. But, but we're still really early in that process, and it's going to take a little while, and it's going to take some consultant expertise, I think, to, to see how we can raise those kind of funds.
Any interest of time? Has anyone got a question that relates to the marketing efforts of the Downtown?
Well, I just had a comment that I'm, I'm glad to see you thinking of more events in the future.
Oh, great.
Oh, man.
Thank you, Clint. Appreciate it.
Shelley, the attendance in terms of those downtown concerts is looking pretty strong.
It is.
It sounds as though it's continually ticked up. Good, good. Does anyone else have any questions?
So I would tell you that there is a direct relationship between the parking tax and some funds that are moved to the Aberdeen Downtown Association. So it does have an impact.
I didn't mean to say that you were entirely out of left field. I think she was just primarily talking about the marketing. All right, well, Shelley, I appreciate you coming in. If no one else has anything to chime in on this one.
Thank you. Appreciate you guys.
You've covered a lot of territory for us. Shelley, keep up the good work.
Thank you.
And don't worry about the 10 minutes.
Next, we've got Lisa Anderson from the Chamber of Commerce here to talk to us about community rebranding. There you are. Lisa, you've got the floor.
Good afternoon, evening, whatever it is. So along with the Aberdeen Downtown Association, the Aberdeen Area Convention and Visitors Bureau, I am here to announce that Pinned Workshop of Aberdeen, owned by Tiffany Langer, was awarded the bid to create the new Aberdeen logo and tagline. The Pinned Workshop staff will work closely with all three of our groups, and throughout this process, and an estimated completion date will be around the end of April this year.
Sounds good. Well, we appreciate you coming in to tell us about that. I think Ms. Langer is very energetic cheerleader for the city. Does anyone have any questions as it relates to that? Otherwise, thank you for the, for the update.
You're welcome.
Lisa, appreciate you coming in. We'll move along to the consent calendar agenda items. We have four items for possible approval for teen city business, items A through D. Can I get a motion to approve those items?
Move to approve.
I've got a motion from Remley and a second from Councilman Ronain. Does anyone have any comments as it relates to any of these calendar items? Otherwise, we'll just take a roll call vote. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
If there was nay.
I'm staying.
Motion does carry with one extension. Move right along to new business. We've got a resolution of intent to make the annual promotion fund allocation totaling $120,000 to Aberdeen BMX. Possible approval of the resolution 200301R regarding the annual promotion fund allocation to Aberdeen BMX building campaign. Lynn, why don't you tell us about that?
Okay. Approximately two weeks ago, you were approached by Aberdeen BMX where they asked for additional $20,000 to deal with a national event within Aberdeen. And there was some confusion as to whether they wanted the money now or whether they could take the money as a payment. And everyone was correct in their analysis because I went back and I listened to the tape, and they would take any money anyway they could get. So, after going back and looking at our promotion fund dollars, we do not have sufficient revenues to do a double allocation for 2020. And so, I called. And so I called Kyle and I spoke to him, and he said it would work if, in fact, we did additional allocation. Instead of doing five allocations at $20,000, we could do six where we give them 120. So what I did is I put together a non-binding resolution that expressing the intent to provide $120,000 over a six-year period, which would take care of their needs to do the improvements that they were requesting.
Move approval.
Second. Got a motion from Rux and a second from Johnson. Does anyone have any questions for Lynn as it relates to that? Councilman Ronain.
This would loosely relate to that. Are there any other commitments? Are there any other commitments that we have made that are not documented this way? You know, Josh pointed out some time ago that we ought to be documenting those commitments that we made. Do we have other ones hanging out there?
We did a resolution for the Boys and Girls Club.
That's what I remember.
And Northern, I'm not certain whether we did a resolution for them or not, but I might have to come back.
Could we look at that? And if we haven't, could we document that, please? I think Josh's idea was a great one.
Okay.
Thank you, sir. Carl, why don't you give us a roll call vote on that? Councilmember Remley.
Aye.
Ronain.
Aye.
Lunsman.
Aye.
Rife.
Aye.
Johnson.
Aye.
Bunsonus.
Aye.
Rux.
Aye.
Mayor Shawman.
I will abstain. Motion does carry. Next, we've got the bid recommendation for sale of a 2008 Model S220 Bobcat Skidsteer. Possible approval to accept the high bid from Diesel Machinery Incorporated in the amount of $13,500 for the Skidsteer. Carl, what do you know about that sale?
Thank you, Mayor. This would be the, one of the Bobcats that the airport had listed as separate, excuse me, as surplus, and the council had approved as surplus when they purchased two new units. We did take sealed bids at the high bid was $13,500. We're looking for council approval to accept that bid.
Moved.
Second. Got a motion from Bunsonus and a second from Johnson. Does anyone have any questions before we take a roll call vote? Otherwise, Carl, give me a roll call, please. Councilmember Rux.
Aye.
Bunsonus.
Aye.
Johnson.
Aye.
Rife.
Aye.
Lunsman.
Aye.
Ronain.
Aye.
Remley.
Aye.
Mayor Shawman.
Aye, motion does carry. Next, we've got a bid recommendation for the sale of a 1989 Model 743 Bobcats Skidsteer. Possible approval to accept the bid of $7,110. Carl, is it pretty much the same story?
Thank you, Mayor. With just a minor twist, the two units that the airport had extra that they declared surplus, the fire department picked up one of those units because it was better than what they had, so the council had approved to surplus the fire department's old vehicle. And this is the old vehicle that we took sealed bids on, and we are looking for approval to accept this bid of $7,110.
Moved.
Second.
Got a motion from Bunsonus and a second from Rux. Any questions on this one? Otherwise, Carl, give me a roll call vote on this, please. Councilmember Remley.
Aye.
Ronain.
Epstein.
Lunsman.
Aye.
Rife.
Aye.
Johnson.
Aye.
Bunsonus.
Aye.
Rux.
Aye.
Mayor Shawman.
Aye, motion does carry. Next, we've got the bid recommendation for water mains, frames, grates, hydrants, and sewer pipe for the Public Works Utility Division. Possible approval to award the bids for schedules A, B, C, and D as recommended and authorized the city manager and finance officer to sign the necessary documents after approval by the city attorney. Robin, would you tell us about that?
This is an annual bid that we do. Schedule A, we're recommending award to Corin Main as being the low bid. Schedule B, Corin Main, also low bid on that one. Schedule C, manholes and inlets to Ferguson, and Schedule D to Millbank Wind Water. If you take a look at the bids overall, by and large, they are slightly up from last year. We did bid less material this year. We have a fair amount of material on hand. We're only buying what we need to supplement, excluding some emergency-type stuff. But for our normal work, we do have enough material with this on hand. So we're recommending those four schedules as published in your agenda.
Thank you, Rob. Can I get a motion?
Move.
To approve all four bid schedules.
Second.
Got a motion from Johnson and a second from Remley. Does anyone have any questions for city engineer while we've got it up? Otherwise, Carl, give me a roll call vote, please. Councilmember Rux.
Aye.
Bunsonus.
Aye.
Johnson.
Aye.
Rife.
Aye.
Lunsman.
Aye.
Ronain.
Aye.
Remley.
Aye.
Mayor Shawman.
Aye, motion does carry. Next, we've got the purchase of an asphalt paving machine from RDO Equipment for the Public Works Street Department. Possible approval to purchase a Leeboy 8520 from RDO Equipment of Aberdeen in the amount of $182,200 through a Sourcewell NJPA bid, and authorize the city manager and finance officer to sign the documents with the approval of the attorney. Robin, what can you tell us about the paving machine?
Approximately a year ago, we were finding that we were really struggling trying to keep our existing paving machine operating properly. We did make it through the year, but we felt that it was not as reliable as we needed when we needed. We had contemplated the idea of maybe trying to share with the county. They do have a pretty good-sized paving machine as well. Their needs for paving and ours are quite a bit different in the size with that type of thing, and we decided it was probably best for us to go ahead and explore a new machine. Bottom line is that the last machine we purchased was about fifteen years ago. We have made it through fifteen years with a used machine. This one should last us through Brett's retirement, which is a lot further away than mine. So, you know, we really, I think, anyway.
Let's hope that lasts.
Yeah, this is going to last us a long time, and I think getting our crew what they need and not taking what the market might allow us to get. Now, we did try to bid a used machine a year or two ago, and we didn't find anything that was out there that was in the right price range and the type of machine we needed. So I think this is the route to go.
Move approval.
Second. Got a motion from Rux and a second from Johnson. Does anyone have any questions or comments on purchasing this equipment?
What's the maximum width that you can pay with this machine?
Fourteen.
Fourteen?
But it will go down to two feet, too.
Yeah. Okay, good.
That's for a narrow street.
Sidewalk.
Carl, give me a roll call vote, please. Councilmember Remley.
Aye.
Ronain.
Aye.
Lunsman.
Aye.
Rife.
Aye.
Johnson.
Aye.
Bunsonus.
Aye.
Rux.
Aye.
Mayor Shawman.
Aye, motion does carry. Next, we'll move along to the city's bills. Approval of the bill list for March 2nd, 2020. Bills listed on your screen with one late addition of AT&amp;T sold for $1,195.42. We'd like to get added to that. Can I get a motion to pay the bills with the addition of the AT&amp;T bill?
Moved.
Second.
A motion from Johnson and a second from Lunsman. Does anyone have any concerns about any of these? Otherwise, Carl, give me a roll call vote, please. Councilmember Rux.
Aye.
Bunsonus.
Aye.
Johnson.
Aye.
Rife.
Aye.
Lunsman.
Aye.
Ronain.
Aye.
Remley.
Aye.
Mayor Shawman.
Aye, motion does carry. Next, we've got the payroll approval for the pay period of February 16th, 2020 through February 29th, 2020, and for the city's share of Social Security Old Age Survivors Insurance Retirement Health and Life Insurance. Can I get a motion for the payroll?
Second.
Motion, Ronain, and a second, Bunsonus. Carl, give me a roll call vote, please. Councilmember Remley.
Aye.
Ronain.
Aye.
Lunsman.
Aye.
Rife.
Aye.
Johnson.
Aye.
Rife.
Aye.
Lunsman.
Aye.
Ronain.
Aye.
Remley.
Aye.
Mayor Shawman.
Aye, motion does carry. Next, we'll have the city managers report. Lynn, what have you got to share with us tonight?
Well, we only have one item, and that would be Robin. Robin would like to do an update on weight load limits and new signings for various different roadways throughout the city.
Robin, the floor is yours.
Okay, it's that time of year where we have to start looking at load limits for our local roads, primarily the neighborhood-type areas. We do not want those heavy loads on them. We do have identified truck routes which will allow up-to-state limits on them. Those are built to a little heavier standard. We try to coordinate this with the county, and they were planning on doing load limits as of Monday next week. Because of the mild weather we're going to experience this weekend, they're looking at pushing that up, and I'm not trying to preempt what Dirk is talking with the county commissioners tomorrow about, but we want to coordinate with them and make sure that we're doing the same type of thing because ours does affect theirs. If we are allowing heavier loads going out of town, they're going to get stuck trying to get out into the county. So we do try to coordinate that at the same time. So we will be doing those as of Friday, and we are seeing, and we've heard complaints about quite a bit of the truck traffic being generated, Eighth Avenue, Melgar Road. We are looking at doing some additional signage. We're going to be doing some truck counts this week, but we are expecting to do something to limit some of that truck traffic that's going through some of the residential neighborhoods and past some of our schools and business districts. So more to come, but we are looking at doing some things within the next week or two, and we will try to coordinate with the affected businesses to make sure that we're not adversely affecting them but giving them proper notification.
So, Robin, just so that everyone's clear and on the same page with this, the rules themselves about the load limits are changing, or this is something that just affects posting of these?
The rules themselves have been in place for years as far as the load limits. The time of year, it may be sometime in February. I think our ordinance says February 1st, we're allowed to put load limits on as early as February 1st. Those will be applied the same as they always have been, with the exception of some of the truck traffic we're trying to move out of the areas that have neighborhoods. And I'll talk, Eighth Avenue is a great example. We're seeing truck traffic going all the way from the bypass through Rolling Hills, past the bowling alley, all the way through town to Brown County 14. That's, first of all, the route's rough right now, so I can't imagine any trucker wanting to use that with an empty truck. But secondly, it's we're just placing some undue danger for those schools. You're going right past Tiffany School, you're going through a lot of neighborhood areas. So those areas, we're looking at trying to limit that truck traffic.
Yeah, that's definitely been a concern that people have expressed to me, the traffic on Eighth especially. Does anyone have anything to chime in on this? Otherwise, do your thing, get that traffic limited. Does anyone have anything to add before we motion for adjournment here? Councilman Ronain.
One item. After the first of the year, we generally do evaluations of the city manager. We usually review the evaluations that the city manager has made of the two employees that work directly for the council, that being the finance officer and the city attorney. In view of the city manager's resignation, I think we probably don't need to do an evaluation of him, but we probably do need to approve the other evaluations. Could we start that process?
I haven't done it. I could forward it up to you.
Okay, terrific.
Starting the process, meaning you want to get together and review those?
I think we merely reviewed, I think he merely provided copies to us last year, and we reviewed them at the end of a meeting and approved them. And so I'm suggesting that we would need to do that again.
So I would ask that maybe that changes, just in this particular case, and maybe going forward also, that we might want to meet to do that. A subcommittee meets.
Subcommittee or, okay.
A subcommittee.